Twenty-three city council meeting to order. I'll ask Councilmember Martha Wallace to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today and feel the blessings this many people in this room concerned for our wonderful city of Jackson. Lord, I ask you to pour your guidance, your wisdom, and most importantly, open all of our hearts to your love. Let us make the best decisions for this city of Jackson. Lord, let us just surround us with your love and peace. Dearly Father, please help us to always remember to help those that can't help themselves. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on our agenda, so we can have these council members can take the active role, is oath of office. I'll call Judge Howell up here and ask all council members to stand so he can administer the oath.
You will stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Mr. Thomas Wallace.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the City Council for the City of Jackson, Tennessee,
of the City Council for the City of Jackson, Tennessee,
to which I have been elected,
to which I have been elected,
and I will support and defend
and I will support and defend
the laws of the City of Jackson
the laws of the City of Jackson,
and the state of Tennessee.
and the state of Tennessee.
Congratulations.
So just because you all got comfortable in your seats, we're going to call a brief recess, they can sign the oath, and then take pictures of the family.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Debbie Swacker, and my address is 207 Candlewood Co., 38305. I am a resident, and today I'm submitting not only my statement, but also statements on behalf of two constituents who could not be here today. On behalf of Ms. Victoria Toon, library board member Susan Francisco and Beth Ann Simpson have both served our community well. Their work on the library board has been invaluable, and I ask that you reappoint them both. On behalf of Ms. Cheryl Coons, I have been a dialysis nurse for the past ten years. Dr. Susan Francisco has been the doctor representing many of my patients for much of that time. She is intelligent, empathetic, and extremely aware of other circumstances. She listens to the needs of others and has a great attitude. She has a great concern about community needs. Dr. Francisco has been involved in charitable events where a band that my husband plays for chose to come together with her church to help those in need. This is a normal activity for Dr. Francisco, and this represents the quality of a person needed on the library board of trustees. I wholeheartedly recommend and support her reappointment. I urge you to vote yes. And then on behalf of myself, board member Francisco and board member Simpson have demonstrated their commitment to the mission and purpose of the Jackson-Madison County Library by working for the improvement of the library services offered for the entire community. They have consistently performed their duties as outlined in Section Four of the Bylaws for the Trustees of the Library. I urge you to vote yes for their reappointment. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. And next we have Ms. Sue Ann Barnes.
Sue Ann Barnes, 205 Westwood Avenue. I have been a resident of Jackson since 1975 and a library supporter all of those years, when my children were young and when they were older. Been Friends of the Library Board President, the Friends of the Library, not the Library Board President, for several times. And I have always felt that the people appointed to the library board by the city and the county have done a wonderful job, and this particular board has done a wonderful job recognizing the diversity of the community and the different patrons that they are serving. And I do support the reappointment of these two wonderful women to that board. Thank you.
All right, next up is Wanda Scanlon.
Yes, Wanda Scanlon, 178 Summerfield Drive, Jackson, Tennessee. I'm a lifelong resident of Jackson, and I'm the current president of the Friends of the Library. The Friends of the Library is a group that assists in programming needs as far as giving support to the library for adult and children programming. I wholeheartedly recommend that these women be reappointed to the board. As the president of the Friends, I'm required to attend the monthly board meetings of the Board of Directors of the Library to give a report. I have seen these women very carefully discuss and think about and bring forward issues, and the entire board spends a lot of time on their thoughtful conclusions that they come up with. So I think they very well serve our community, and I do recommend their reappointment.
All right, thank you. And Cindy Boyle.
Cindy Boyle, 78 Weatheredge Drive. I could simply say ditto to what they all said, because I definitely agree with them and encourage you and support Dr. Francisco and Beth Ann Simpson. I think this library board has shown that "we, the people" actually means "all the people" in Jackson-Madison County. I would like to see that continue. So I'd appreciate and support and encourage you to reappoint Dr. Francisco and Beth Ann Simpson to the library board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm going to tell the council, I mean, I have time, I have all my time here. Just think of going to all the council. All right, next up we have first reading. Item one under first reading is consideration of an ordinance to change the name of South Day Street to Slack Street.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have the materials to this street name change. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending approval of it to you. Mr. Slack's daughter has been working tirelessly to get this done. She's probably been at this about two years. She's tried to contact all property owners and to get support, and she's gotten the majority of those. The only ones that she wasn't able to contact were some of the out-of-town property owners. But we've only heard from one property owner that was opposed to it, but all the other support that's there looks to be a majority in support of the name change. So again, the Planning Commission is recommending approval of it to you.
Any questions from council?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to point out that I've known Mr. Walter Slack who this is in honor of, and he's a 95-year-old gentleman or thereabout, and I think this is a worthy tribute to him that his daughter is pursuing, and so I will be voting for it.
All right, any other questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you, Stan. Item two is changes to Title One, Chapter Two, public comment. Louis, hop quiz time?
Hop quiz.
Teresa Luna has been meeting with some of the council members revising various sections of the city ordinances. Which one is this, Mayor?
Public comment. This is Title One, Chapter Two, the addition to the public comment section in the agenda.
Yeah, this is the one that we just followed about the order of business. Anybody got any questions?
Great explanation, yeah. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, thank you, Louis. No second readings today, we're going to be on a new business. Item one is the election of a vice mayor.
Mr. Chairman. It has been my privilege and really an honor to serve the past year as vice mayor. I've really enjoyed it, and I want to thank the council members and the prior council members. It's really been fun and a real good time, but seriously, I've enjoyed it. But it is my privilege to nominate Councilmember Russ McKelby for the coming year for vice mayor.
All right.
Second.
Second, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
One more.
One more time, any other nominations? Are we having a motion and a second? Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item three is reappointment of city recorder.
I was going to hit my hand, too.
Item three is reappointment of city recorder, and I submit to the council Bobby Arnold for the reappointment of city recorder. Any questions from council?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
All right, thank you, Councilman Dodd. Item three is the reappointment of city recorder, and I submit to the council Bobby Arnold for the reappointment of city recorder. Any questions from council?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to two abstain.
All right, thank you, Mr. Arnold. We've already talked. Want to give him a round of applause, too?
Yeah.
All right, item four is a contract with West Tennessee Coffee Service for coffee services.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we took bids for coffee services. These coffee services are for coffee supplies as listed in your bid packet for the various departments within the city. One bid was received. It's a recommendation toward this bid to West Tennessee Coffee Service as best bid. This bid was received at a total cost of $274.95, and in your packets, the individual items are broken down. This will be a one-year agreement, and the city will have the right to four one-year options to renew.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item five, consideration of a contract with Watson's Cleaning for janitorial services at the Safe Hope Center.
So we took bids for janitorial services for the Safe Hope Center. This will be a weekly janitorial service. Six bids were received. It's a recommendation of the Safe Hope Center and Purchasing Department toward this bid to Watson's Cleaning Services best bid. This bid was received at a cost of $150 per week, $115 per week, and this will also be a one-year agreement, and the city will have the right to four one-year options to renew.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you, Zach. Item six is proposed sale of surplus property at 213 Second Street in the amount of $1,000. Our newly reappointed city reporter.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I appreciate your support.
All right, item four is a contract with West Tennessee Coffee Service for coffee services.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we took bids for coffee services. These coffee services are for coffee supplies as listed in your bid packet for the various departments within the city. One bid was received. It's a recommendation toward this bid to West Tennessee Coffee Service as best bid. This bid was received at a total cost of $274.95. And in your packets, the individual items are broken down. This will be a one year agreement and the city will have the right to four one year options to renew.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, item five, consideration of a contract with Watson's Cleaning for janitorial services at the Safe Hope Center.
So we took bids for janitorial services for the Safe Hope Center. This will be a weekly janitorial service. Six bids were received. It's a recommendation of the Safe Hope Center and Purchasing Department toward this bid to Watson's Cleaning Services best bid. This bid will receive at a cost of $150 per week, $115 per week. And this will also be a one year agreement and the city will have the right to four one year options to renew.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, Zach. Item six is proposed sale of surplus property at 213 Second Street in the amount of $1,000. Our newly reported, reappointed city reporter.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, I appreciate your support. This proposed sale of surplus property comes to you this morning recommended. We've run it through our internal policy that we have on processing such proposed sales and so it's compliant with that policy. It's located at 213 Second Street. The offer is $1,000 and it's important to note a couple of things. Currently, we have about rounding this a little bit, about $1,500 a year ongoing maintenance cost related to the property. So we'll avoid that cost. And at the meeting last week, the agenda meeting, there was a question about whether this lot was in the flood zone or flood plain. We've confirmed that it is not in, in the flood plain, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Item seven is consideration of committee and board appointments. First chair of the library board, reappointment of Susan Francisco and Beth Anne Simpson.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I will sustain on this vote and it's not because of the two people nominated. I have heard nothing but good things and particularly today with this panel was most impressive. I'm going to sustain because of the procedure, receive this nomination on Thursday night with us to vote on it today. And it being a holiday, have not had a chance to vet, so this is just a procedure vote.
All right, any other further discussion? Council, please vote.
Six to, two no's and one abstain.
Then we go to B is J E eight board appointment of Andre Gist.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion?
I will sustain for the same reason.
Council, please vote.
Seven to, to one and one abstain.
Item eight is consideration of, we're going to change that wording from consideration, presentation of budget of minimum less than $10,000 for the council. Item nine is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, before we adjourn, we'll let everybody know there's refreshments outside for a reperception for our newly sworn in council members. So you're welcome to stay and join everyone for that. Nothing, nothing else coming for the council, meeting is adjourned.